Good evening, one, and welcome to the February 21st, 2022 Brian Council meeting. Would you please stand and join me in pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First, an agenda is approved in minutes of the February 7th, 2022 council meeting.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Yes.
John?
Yeah.
Judy?
Yes.
Brooke?
Yes.
Yes.
Next on the agenda is a presentation by MBH A H.
Yes, I'd like you to come in if you could introduce yourself to council and then let me know which slide you would up.
Sure, sure, thank you. Good evening, council. Thanks for your time tonight. My name's Pete Schwigger, and I'm with MBH Partners. We're 9100 Center Point Drive in West Chester, Ohio. I'm actually here on behalf of St. Mary Development Corporation, who's a Dayton-based housing developer. We partner with St. Mary Development on many projects, consult them on others. And because I was in the area and able to be in the area tonight and work with them so closely on these types of developments, we're here to kind of give you an update on what they are proposing to do here. We will have involvement in the development. We are listed as the property manager, so we will assist and be onsite presence from a property management perspective. So anyway, St. Mary Development Corporation's been developing housings for multiple decades. Their housing includes as many as several thousand units in several states. Most of that's here in Ohio. They grew out of a Catholic-based not-for-profit in Dayton into one of the state's largest housing developers, particularly focusing on senior housing. They do have other types of multifamily housing as well. With that, we've partnered on more than a dozen developments with them, all of them utilizing the same funding sources and same programs to build senior independent living. These developments are age-restricted, 55-plus. They typically average a 78- to 80-year-old resident, true retirees, folks stepping and downsizing out of homes. In our, in our housing portfolio recently, we did a survey and we found that we get around 30% to 40% of the renters downsizing out of their home, selling their home, trying to simplify their life in an independent living facility. And what that entails is one- and two-bedroom units of rental product, anything and everything you would expect in your own home you'll find in these units, modern open-floor plans, walk-in closet, in-unit laundry. They are a true home, individual units. We have a mix of ones and twos because we find seniors downsize out of homes. They still have a lot of stuff. We average around 1.1 residents per unit in this type of facility. So it is very low intensity, average age of an 80-year-old, 1.1 residents per unit. We, we see around 70% of our residents actually driving. With our units, our one- and two-bedroom units, we have a full-time onsite management presence. There's an onsite manager's office, there's a community room, a fitness center, a theater area, a business center, all accessible to residents within the building 24/7 amenities. Our staff is there from a management's perspective on a full-time status. We also have a full-time onsite property, I'm sorry, service tech who assists residents with their unit needs and so forth. In addition to that, we do provide programs, we're senior independent living. So we're not providing healthcare, we're not providing nursing care. Our goal is to keep seniors out of the, out of assisted care and out of nursing care, keep them independent as absolutely long as possible. From a quality-of-life perspective, there are certainly advantages, but additionally economic advantages because those heights of facilities have substantial cost to them. So we can provide a high-quality care, keeping seniors independent with the access of programs. So we'll be providing things like curb-to-curb transportation, in-home meals, like housekeeping. We set up a residence association. They have weekly and regular activities, movie nights, cards, book clubs, et cetera, all there within the building. Additionally, we will have some exterior spaces. We do an outdoor play, I'm sorry, picnic shelter, and outdoor walking trails. We'll have some community garden areas, things of that nature. I'll share first and foremost maybe a site plan. We'll start with that if you don't mind. This is our typical single-three-story elevator. This is actually a 45-unit building, so very similar in nature. What we've proposed is 43 units, so slightly smaller than that. And you can see from the perspective, it's a single building. It is a large building with 50 units, or I'm sorry, 43 units in one building. But it is broken up. Each individual facade is broken. You can see the roof line has a lot of variation and no linear long projections. We try to take this building and make it feel as if it's a series of smaller buildings that are connected, a series of townhomes or brown homes. The front facades of this building are going to be around 2/3 brick. So on the front facades, you're going to see two stories plus of brick. And then the third is an accent material. We use shake siding, other types of panel, sometimes some vertical siding. It really just depends on the area and what matches the architecture in the area. So on the rear sides of the building, we do a little less brick. We would intend to face this building towards the adjacent neighborhood. And maybe from here, if we could step into the site plan. And I'll step over here and just try and explain how we're trying to orient the site plan in a way.
So this is the Betts facility?
Yeah. And then the single, semi-family subdivision is down here on this side of the subdivision. So first and foremost, we've got a lot of recreational space up on this side. It was between the Y, the Betts facility, some of the other park space, field spaces and so forth. And so our initial goal was, is well, let's get the building first and foremost as far away from residential areas we can and orient up into that corner so that we're as near that open space as possible. That is going to give us the greatest separation from the residential development to our building edges. Secondly, one thing, we can stay within the complacency zone. And one thing we will ultimately, if we are able to proceed with this development, is we will ask for a parking variance. Senior housing, we don't need the parking that your code requires. And it's not necessary to cut out on parking, it's to preserve that open space and that green space because ultimately, as much as we can, we want to buffer and screen that residential area. So we're going to do so. First and foremost, I think it's very possible for us, if we want to, to run kind of a three-board panel fence, that whole property line, if that's something that neighbors are concerned about. But more importantly, we're going to be focusing on buffering and screening in this area. We will have a detention pond. That certainly can be an amenity both for our residents as well as an amenity for our adjacent residents. We will landscape those areas. This doesn't show it, but there is a landscape plan. We can certainly include some landscape buffering and trees in that area as well. But ultimately, that's how we hope to fit on the site. Again, the only variance that we would anticipate is, is the potential parking reduction. And again, we can meet the parking needs, but it's just going to minimize what we can do with buffer. I will say, if I'm thinking correctly and if correct my own, I think the height requirement is 35 feet. As a flat-roof version of this building, we can stay in the 35 feet. We do think that, and we have a flat roof and a gabled roof version of this building. We do think the gabled roof version of the building is a little more residential. And so we would possibly ask for a variance to do the gabled roof. And if that wasn't something that was desired, because again, it's out of the height, then we would just stick to the, to the flat-roof version of the building. And we're going to be right around 35 feet on the nose in that case. So, and it's not a bed-looking building. I just think the gables are going to balance better with the, with the adjacent residential. So with that, I know there's probably a lot of questions to council, a lot of questions to the neighbors. And I am here to answer anybody's questions. We're excited about it. One thing I will say, as we've done a market study, there's only one comparable senior development in your community. It's 100% leased, has a substantial waitlist. The demand or need for senior housing's great. It's your fastest-growing demographic. There's not a lot of senior housing options. These are built with universal divine features, they're 100% accessible, they're green in building design. They will be the highest-quality housing units in your community from a construction perspective. And we want to just allow your seniors to age in place and age in a quality fashion and allow them to improve their quality life as, as they age. So thank you so much, and again, I'll be available for your questions.
Does anyone, Pete?
Yes, I'm sorry.
I think, does anyone have any questions right now?
I do. One of the questions that keeps coming up, and I'm hearing all kinds of numbers, and I want to get, get it straight from the horse's mouth. You know, this is being presented as a senior low-to-mid-income facility. Is there an expiration on that? In other words, is at some point, could the senior side of that fall off and it become only low-income?
Yeah, so we would be deed restricted for 30 years for the senior designation. If it was a desire, and again, this is really St. Mary's decision whether to do or not, they could or they could work with you to elect to do that in a longer fashion. But the, the funding we use requires it to stay senior for 30.
Who actually pays the rent? Does the government pay the rent?
No, our residents pay and rent. We don't have any sub, rent subsidy ourselves, so we, we don't have a project-based section.
So the renter actually pays, not the government?
Yeah, the tax credit program focuses on affordability. So we provide the rent at what's deemed a below-market. So if a one-bedroom senior unit might rent for 900 in your community, we might be able to rent it for 700. And so the advantage is to the resident who is on a fixed income, retired, trying to make ends meet. To find it, can they even find it in the community first and foremost? Right now, no. And if they, we've got development over in Wasiana that is very similar in nature. And we've seen from communities like as far away as Bryan, folks coming to that facility because they didn't have it. And so we think it's a way to allow your seniors to age in place. It allows them to work off their fixed incomes and their retirements and their pensions and still have a little discretionary money to spend and, you know, live a healthy life.
I have a couple of questions. First of all, that street that you would be coming access to would be Center Street. If you've ever been out there when school starts and school lets out in the morning and the afternoon, it's unbelievable. Has there been any kind of a study done on that at all?
Well, first and foremost, I will say this. First, we got to go get our financing first. If we're financed, then we go through your typical procedures. That would be your site planning approval processes. We bring that through, we show our engineered drawings. Certainly, traffic and engineer design, design decisions are made at that point. What I can say is this development will commit and adhere to all of your requirements. I will also say, senior housing is very, very low-intensity from a traffic generation standpoint. Few of our residents drive. We utilize these transportation systems and bus systems. So we're not going to be creating much load, but I can assure you, whatever connection upgrades are required by our development, that your code would say we should or need to do would be things that get done.
I have nothing against senior housing. I am a senior. I'm not happy with where you want to put it. I'm sorry, I just don't, I'm not comfortable with that at all. That's my own opinion. And I have a few different reasons. But that's, that's personally what, the way I feel about it.
Are these units all in one? I mean, it's all one big unit, they're not separated? So what happens like if there's a fire? Because we just had a fire at an apartment building a couple of weeks ago. So how is that going to be handled?
Each individual unit's own fire rated and separation. And so what happens to get into this building, there will be likely three access points and sometimes four. They're all fobbed access points. So you get in yourself into a vestibule, you then electronically fob yourself into a secure living environment. Once you're through that electronic fob as a resident, you're in a secure living environment. And all of the units are accessed from this internal corridor and breezeway that is secure, heated, and you then get to your unit from there. You'd either go to the elevator and up. It's an elevator building. And so you got zero-step access to whatever unit you're in. And yeah, each individual unit has its own access point from that internal hallway. It's a mix of one- and two-bedroom units.
I think I just want council aware, because I've taken these phone calls before and it's something you wouldn't locally be aware of, but there's not a lot of public transportation for seniors in Williams County. I, as the mayor, get calls from seniors frequently, and this was even before the pandemic, where yes, the, the senior center does offer, you know, the ability to take someone to a doctor's appointment. But typically, if they don't have that doctor's appointment scheduled two or three days beforehand, they're not going to get on the schedule. So I do want you aware of that locally. A lot of our 80-year-olds still drive because of that. They just, they, they drive. So I, I want you to just be, have that in the back of your mind with the parking conversation. I appreciate the aesthetic piece you're trying to provide, but we don't have a lot of public transportation options for seniors or otherwise in the rural communities here.
Just so you're aware, any deficiencies in the system, St. Mary Development Corp., they're committed to filling those for, for their residents. They're making commitments to the states that they will make sure that certain levels of curb-to-curb service is available. So yes, they will likely rely on partners, but if those partners or if there's deficiencies in the systems, they'll be committing to filling those voids with their own systems.
At this time, is there any public comments? All right, well, we're going to go to, to line number three here, which is hearing public concerns. We ask if you have concerns to come up to the podium, speak into the mic, and state your name for the record. And also, this is a taped session, so be cordial. Anyone will come up. And there's a five-minute limit. There will be timer right there.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Pam Bard Steel, and I'm here representing five generations of the Bard family. We've been living in this town and have called it our home since 1908. And I believe I'm not only speaking for myself, but I'm speaking for my great-grandfather Dale, grandfather Randolph, third-generation Jim, my husband Bill and I, and our children, James and Megan, who grew up here and are hoping to come back to Bryan to make it their permanent home. So why is all that important? You know, those of you who know me, that I have treasured their seniors that have come before us for many, many years. And my comments tonight, like you said, should never be taken as an anti-senior citizens. It's another fact that except for my time at college, and when I first got married, lived in Denver, I've lived my entire life in Bryan, Ohio because of our family business. So why is all that important? I'm telling you this because of all the years that we've lived, we've never spoken out against a project. We have never spoken negatively about anything until this point now. And that's why I guess I'm trying to emphasize why this is important to my family. Although senior housing is, for those on a fixed income, might be a good idea for our community, the site selected is not. And there's for two very important reasons. Community safety and the loss of land that could benefit generations for others. Regarding my safety concerns, I think that we can all agree a mid-rise facility that he showed us in this small congested area, stacking 43 residents, their visitors, their family members, would create a safety issue with our Y, our schools, our Eric's Ice Cream, the church that's right there. I think we need to really put safety above all at all costs. Regarding the park system concerns, this particular piece of property is one of the last available properties that nestle up against the Bryan city parks. And our park system is one of the most marketable reasons families are willing to relocate to the Bryan area when they're looking for a new job or they want to bring their family to Bryan. Additional green belt space within the city limits, especially one next to the park system, is really hard to come by. And once that building is built, that's it. You know, you can't expand that and that ideal space is gone forever. So I really feel that if we allow a developer to come into our community and build a three-story building, this building is, this is two-story, so a three-story for 43 residences on that particular piece of land, we will be doing a disservice to every Bryan generation. It's a disservice to the generation that came before us, that worked so hard to create that amazing park system that we inherited. It's a disservice for my generation that need to be good stewards and leave our community better than we found it. And it's especially a disservice to the next generation because then they're stuck with the three-story building and a parking lot next to their city park. So if you close your eyes and you kind of think about what they were talking about tonight, on one hand, you have a three-story building towering over everything that's in an immediate area and bringing impacting safety, traffic concerns that I feel are being underestimated. And on the other hand, you see a park space that's this beautiful green space for all ages, all income levels, all families to come together for years to come. But the last thing I want to do is take away the Betts family's opportunity to sell their family, to sell their property because my family is always considered the Betts family friends. And one of my great memories is when both of our boys did a tag team for the commencement speech for the graduation. So we have so much respect for the Betts family. But within that, I say that with that thought in mind, I can safely say is that if this current plan is abandoned, our family, the Jim Bard, Jim and Joan, Bill and Pam, James and Megan, we will work with the Betts family together to explore a possible opportunity where a sale of that property not only is safe and enjoyable, but can be used for all members of our community for many generations to come. So if you just, you don't remember anything I said tonight, remember these four words. It's the right project, but it's the wrong place. So I really feel strongly, it's the right project at the wrong place. And thank you again so much for letting me raise my concerns this evening.
Thank you, Pam.
Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Brent Wilson. I represent Wilson Auction Realty Company and the Betts family and our community. I'm telling you, senior housing is a must in our community. One, there's only two places right now zoned in this area for senior housing. The Betts family happens to be one of them. The Y, the park is a perfect location. Most seniors want to be close to ballgames, the Y, the parks, and they want to be near other residences, right? It's zoned R3, it meets all zoning requirements. This is a great company if you look at what they have done and what they bring. The, the job of our council is to promote business and bring in revenue, not buy up land and turn it to a park. That costs us taxpayers money. And I'm a taxpayer. And in, in doing that, in shutting out businesses, in putting out a letter to the state of Ohio saying that we object to this, is saying that Bryan is closed to businesses. We work hard to bring business here. I personally do it through my company. We fight Indiana and we fight Michigan. We have Jim Hoops and Rob McCauley fighting at the state for us right now to help us make Northwest Ohio a better place and bring business because we're fighting that, right? We have to help ourselves. And by objecting to this tells the whole country, Bryan, Ohio is closed to business. And I think that's wrong. And we have a housing shortage. We have seniors calling our office wanting to downsize. This is something that is desperately needed in our community. When they move to town, it opens up the other housing market. So now you just created 80 houses or 86, whatever it may be, versus having that shortage. You're helping that out. They're bringing in revenue, they pay taxes, they bring in jobs, they have administrators. This is, either we go being progressive or we go stagnant. I think it's very important that the council, I, I understand the neighbors, I understand that. But to say that you're against it and it's in the wrong place, what is the right place? Who is to decide that? That's what your zoning's for. This meets the zoning requirements. It's in the right area, especially if I were a senior, and I hope I am, lived to get to that point, I have the opportunity to live near a park, near a ballfield, where I can watch the grandkids go and not have to worry about driving because they're going to provide that. And to say there's going to be a traffic problem, I highly doubt in Williams County. I wish we had traffic problems. I just came from Detroit today and Toledo. You want to see traffic problem, there, and Finley is the most progressive city in Ohio. We need to be like that. And they have, they don't have traffic problems, they welcome businesses. That's what we need to do. If we're going to grow this community and continue to be progressive, we need to look forward. Thank you.
I could just say a couple of things about what Mr. Wilson just spoke to. I agree on a lot of things. And I think that, and the people that I've talked to, I've not heard anybody say that we don't need senior housing. Big concern is the location. One thing that, that I sort of agree with, but not 100% with Mr. Wilson, and that is our job as council people. Yes, part of our job is to promote business, but we also have to represent the people that have elected us to these positions and the wishes that they have. And what I'm hearing loud and clear from, and, and this is not my war. So I, to a certain extent, don't have a horse in this race. But people have reached out and said, I need somebody to hear me on this because I'm very concerned. And they're, they are concerned about this location. And so I, I, I think that though we are here to promote business, and this is something that needs to be done in, in Bryan, we also have to listen to what the community says, and this is one of those situations that it's not an easy decision. And so we have to collectively make the best decision for Bryan.
I have to agree with Mr. Hoopie. And from the last meeting, if any of you were watching, you know, I said then that I just was not in favor of, in this particular spot. I did talk to Mr. Wilson on the phone. He knows exactly how I feel. I have a lot of concerns. As I said a minute ago, I am a senior. I don't know if I would want to go out in a snowstorm and they're going to plow that parking lot. What's going to happen to my car? Am I going to have to dig it out? I don't want to do that at my age. I don't want to do that. The other thing is, and I was criticized for this because of what I said of where the location is. the location is, I wouldn't want that in my backyard. I'm sorry, I would not. Because of the parking, you're going to hear the car doors, you're going to hear the lights at night when someone comes home. If you have your curtains open, the lights are going to shine right in there. Yes, they said they could put up a fence and some, and some possible landscaping. Is that going to solve the problem? I don't know. I don't know. But I just look at Mr. Wilson and I think, would you want this in your backyard? That's my opinion, my own opinion.
Is there anyone else that wants to come forward?
My name's Brett Cordy, and I guess I'd come up and talk since we're talking about backyards. And looking at that diagram, it would directly impact my backyard, my four children, their wiffle ball games, they love to play in that field. But regardless, I guess what I, I'm more of the pragmatic side versus the, you know, the theoretical stuff. I listened to last month's meeting or a couple of weeks ago. Personally, I think that there's always a way. Okay? I've been told that there's really nothing that we could do. All the zoning requirements get met, it's a done deal. So I've done my due diligence as best I could. The company's phenomenal, the St. Mary's Development. You go back thirty years, they're faith-based, their properties are still senior properties. I don't know if that'll change after the thirty years, but it was, it was started by, it seemed like a nice couple many, many years ago to help seniors. So I don't think anybody would speak negatively towards the project itself. And I think certainly there's, there's the need. My question is, I guess I have two questions. Is there a minimum acreage for an R3 property in the city? Like, there's a hundred and forty-three pages of your zoning and planning commission, and one of the things that I looked over, I didn't know if there was a minimum acreage requirement for a multi-residential property in R3. Because I believe that's a 3.6 acre parcel.
Please, our zoning administrator Brett, this is Andy Waterston.
Yes, there is a five-acre minimum. However, this is already an existing lot of record. So if they were coming and wanted to subdivide off ten acres to the 3.43, they would have to get a variance to it. But since this is already an existing lot of record, it is what it is. And my second question was, what options do we have as a city council? I guess this has opened everyone's eyes to some of the issues that we've had in our, in our city. And I really enjoy living in Bryan. We've been here since 2016. I started my career teaching, my first year I lived in low-income housing in Van Works. So I understand both ends of the need for subdivision developmental houses being built, but I also see a need for the senior housing as well. But what options do we have? I've heard several people say we only have two areas in the city. Is there something else that can be done? And do we have options elsewhere in the city? Would the developmental company be willing to look, keep it within our city but look elsewhere? Because it is, it's a prime location for multiple uses. And I guess the issue that I'm having is either it's going to work or it's not going to work. And if it's not going to work, can we still keep this in our city and find some other option? So, thank you.
Andy, do you want to come back up here and speak to that, that they were given both property options?
The other area in the city that is zoned R3 would be South Portland Street by the Senior Center and CHP. If you recall, like I said a couple of years ago, Walk Development looked at doing something similar to this, went through the, I believe, the same funding source, but did not get it. And I have not heard anything back from them. So off the top of my head, South Portland Street, and this property is basically the open R3 land that we have in the city right now.
And when you were contacted, though, you did make the developer aware of both properties? Is that fair?
I did pass contact information on to Pete for the property on South Portland Street, but Pete's going to have to ask what happened with that, because I have not heard anything.
Sure. I just think if we can all kind of articulate our questions and answer as we can, there might be.
With this, I'll try and give you a broader spectrum to the housing funding that we're applying for. The state of Ohio makes funding available for this type of housing on an annual basis. And it's a competitive process. Last year, there was as many as a hundred and twenty-five applications. They have enough fin, funding to finance around twenty-five. So it's very, very competitive. You got to score well, you got to compete, you got to score. You got about a twenty percent likelihood. Now, ourselves at St. Mary's, we're very strategic. We know how to find places that score. The scoring system changes from year to year. Fortunately for Bryan, the scoring system changed, and now Bryan has an opportunity. One census tract in particular, within the city, scores very well for senior housing. And that reflects the need, the lack of housing, and also the quality of the environment that surrounds us. Those are the things that the state scores on. So with that, it's an opportunity to take advantage of these state funds, federal funds that if they're not used here in Bryan, will be used in some other competing community around the state that also has a need. So it is very competitive, and we know we need to score, so we know we need to be in this census tract. We then looked at the census tract, and you are correct, there are two clusters of land available with the R3 designation. We made contact with both owners. This owner responded, and we were able to negotiate a deal. The other owner did not respond. That doesn't mean they didn't want to sell or weren't interested in selling, but they did not respond to our inquiries. So knowing we had a piece of property that is zoned properly for the use, it made sense that we would move forward on this site. Certainly rezonings, as we all know, are cumbersome, and you don't do them without a really good reason and intent. So why go rezone something to this? I have one other parcel to choose from. They're not responding. We've got a parcel that's available and zoned properly. Why would you go try to rezone something in that case when you know you've got a piece of property that's zoned properly, sized properly, and has a lot of amenities that are attractive for seniors? This, I will say, this is just maybe broader spectrum. A lot of this came out of a notice that was provided, and the whole goal of that is the state wants communities, neighborhoods, to be aware of what's going on in their community and what the state's resources might be used as. Certainly, the community can respond with a favorable opinion, a negative opinion, or no opinion whatsoever. Certainly, we're hoping it's not a negative opinion. Certainly, it is a new eleven to twelve million dollar investment in the community, is providing needed senior housing to your community. No matter what occurs in the event that it is funded and it is zoned and we do have to move forward or do have the opportunity to move forward, know that all of the things we've committed as far as buffering, screening, working with the residents to make sure it's as minimally as impactful as possible, those commitments are going to stand whether you write a negative letter or a positive letter or anything in between. Those are just commitments we do as everyday business. We want to have the best impact on the community. We want to have as little negative impact. And I will say, if you go to Sylvania, Ohio, very high-end suburb of Toledo, one of the first of these I built over ten, eleven years ago, still looks brand-new, four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar condos being built right behind it right now. It's not something that's going to deter from the neighborhood. And in fact, I think that many folks right there in the neighborhood are going to be mentioning it to their moms and dads and find ways that their friends or family are able to benefit from it. So I'm sorry I rambled a little bit, but I just wanted to make sure that you knew those commitments are there for the long haul, whatever action you take, and whatever result here. We'll keep continuing to trying to help bring new housing to your community and do it in the best way we can.
Pete, could I just?
Absolutely.
Since I have these, this list of concerns?
Sure.
I'd give you an opportunity to address.
Okay, no problem.
One of them is, well, first of all, the architecture. Is that set in stone?
No. It's a very adaptable facade. I could show you eight to ten different versions of this building that are done with flat roofs, gabled roofs, different facades, different material treatments. In the end, we're willing to work with the community on what is desired there.
That was one of the concerns.
Certainly, there's always economic constraints with that.
Sure, sure. But that was one of the concerns, is would it fit into the area? Typically, noise levels. Is there a lot of noise with this?
Average in a seventy-eight to eighty-year-old resident, we are pretty low intensity. We average one, one point one residents per unit, seventy percent drivers. It's a pretty low intensity and very quiet, very, very quiet.
And you had already talked about vehicle traffic and things like that. Parking lot lighting, is that something that you would probably?
We do have parking lot lighting. It is all properly downcast and isolated into the parking lot areas. But yes, obviously, that's a security thing, and we want to make sure we're providing adequate lighting in that parking lot.
And is there a way of minimizing the light pollution that would come?
Yeah, those are all literal downcast to where you get ten-plus feet off of that parking lot, there's zero light. And again, that, the more important features, we're going to have that big buffer. What you're seeing in the size of that pond, we can increase the size of the pond, get some landscaping in between there as well. But yeah, all that lighting is direct downcast, isolated on the parking lot areas.
Now, when you talk about buffering and landscaping, are we talking like a tree line along there? Because one of the concerns too was the ability of someone to look out their third-floor window. And some of the properties along there to the back of their house, they have
Yeah.
large windows that face that current field, and they don't want people to be able to see in their houses, so to speak. And so they don't want to have to put up curtains and all that kind of thing to block the view that they've always had. Is that?
Yeah, absolutely. I would see the buffering being a combination of the pond, landscaping, and a fence line. I'm not necessarily saying we need the fence line, but it is a way to kind of create that barrier to make sure folks don't feel like we're going to be wandering into their properties. To me, it's more about the separation, the pond and the landscaping. The reality is, is if this was zone single-family, those same single-family lots would have that same scenario potentially looking into someone's yard. But we're happy to incorporate buffering through the pond, landscaping, and a fence along that property.
And outside of that, most of it is in regards to, you know, property values, things like that. But those were some of the things that I thought you could address.
Yeah.
And I thought it would just be fair to you to give you that opportunity.
And another example is down in Lawrence, Indiana, suburban Indianapolis. We built on an army base there. We were the very first development of this retired army base. And since then, literally adjacent to us, a hundred and fifty million dollars worth of developments occurred. And again, it's a four-hundred-plus-thousand single-family homes, high-end market-rate apartment developments. So yeah, no, and ultimately, it can see that the street has been stubbed and there's going to be some new single-family homes there. And I, we're going to be using the same materials and technically building the higher building standards through the National Green Buildings Standard that we would adhere to, all accessible. So there's not going to be any diminishment of quality in our product. Thanks for your time.
Hello. My name is Tammy Wood, and I just have questions. So I feel like I'm asking the person behind me questions. I'm sorry. Anyways, we're talking about this project as something that could help us with senior housing in Bryan, Ohio. But I'm thinking that we're talking about seniors with limited incomes and that type of thing. Are there HUD guidelines or what do you follow in that regard? And then if we could just talk about income and assets, that would help me understand.
Yeah. So the tax credit program we're using is affordable in nature. As I mentioned, we don't have rent subsidy. There's no Section Eight contract that I provide. Our residents pay their own rent. And there's really two criteria, well, three criteria. First and foremost, you have to be fifty-five plus. Secondly, you have to make under eighty percent AMI, eighty percent adjusted median income for the county. By the way, that's based on a family. So as a retiree, you meet the definition very easy. While it's eighty percent AMI, much more like ninety percent, eighty-five to ninety percent of your senior households will meet the definition, because, again, we're working off retirement. So eighty percent AMI provides access, if you look at Bryan as a whole, around eight-hundred senior income-eligible households in the community. And right now, we have around forty units available in the community. Those are a hundred percent leased and have a pretty substantial waitlist. And so our goal is to serve those others, which is a big percentage from a capture rate. That's quite a demand and need. You know, at retirement, we are talking about folks working off of pensions and social security and fixed incomes, and certainly, we are able to help benefit them by providing them a discounted rent. It's really the goal here. And service.
Just the asset part.
Assets.
If I get, if I sell my farm?
That is an asset, not an income. It wouldn't necessarily disqualify. Yeah, so we get around thirty to forty percent of our renters out of ownership. And so the question is, is well, what is the test here? And it's an income test. It's how much money do you get a year off your social security and your pension or retirements, or if you still work that? And so to meet that definition is an income test. And so someone could sell their hundred and twenty-five, hundred and fifty-thousand-dollar house, it's an asset, kind of put that away to help supplement their retirement and still potentially meet the income definition, because they are only making, you know, three, four thousand, you know, three thousand dollars a month off of pensions and social securities and so forth. So their owners are eligible to sell, and that wouldn't necessarily disqualify them. Other income-related questions may disqualify them.
Thanks for the opportunity. My name's Chad Tinkle. I just want to make a few comments. First, Mr. Betts, thanks for bringing St. Mary's to Bryan to bid on. I think it's definitely a need for our community, and the renderings that you showed today, I've been very impressed with. I think when you deal with what Brett was talking about, not having enough housing here, my wife and I tried to put a very small dent in that by developing seven lots. Again, a very small dent. We have, we have a need for much more housing than that. I think we have a need for condominiums. I think we have a need for higher-end condominiums. When we talk about senior living, not only do we have a need to house these eighty percent income individuals, but we also have a need to house seniors that are above that income as well. I would say shame on us for not coming up with better ideas sooner and Mr. Betts, you having to go and find something like this. I think the area, which is adjacent to the property I just developed, would be wonderful to continue adding condominiums. I think the area that's adjacent to the senior living would be absolutely perfect. Unfortunately, they didn't respond to your request for this. I just ask for time for us to collaborate and be a little more creative and maybe give us a few more opportunities than this being the opportunity that we go with. I think it's needed in our community. I think St. Mary's is a good company. I just don't think it's the right site. And I'll echo what Pam Barb Steele said. Mr. Betts, if we can figure out a way to move forward with this and we can continue with St. Mary's being in our community, there are people in this community that would be willing to buy that land off of you. So, thank you for your time.
I do need to correct something. If Mr. Wilson here and Pete, I don't believe we've ever met. I don't believe I invited you here. Okay, that's one thing. Another thing is that I did not approach MBH. Yeah, okay. You approached Brett? That would have been sometime in September, as my records show, when we actually finalized our agreement, I believe it was Christmas, showing that we took approximately three months to do what is being done now, which I appreciate. I appreciate all the comments from all the people in the community, because it's important for people to understand what the issues are, especially as it relates to kind of, when you hear low-income housing. when you hear low-income housing, it's not subsidized, I appreciate that. It's not all of your assets, it's your retirement piece. So I think those things needed to be cleared up, and I appreciate that. But I also wanted to clear up that you were not sought, you got your information. Bryan was an area that was ripe, as we all know, who live in Bryan, for housing and senior housing, and approached us. And quite frankly, you do not know this, I will tell you this now and publicly make the statement, we looked into you extremely well, more than you maybe even figured, and felt as though that it was a company that we could do, meet our, our being, my wife and I's criteria, which was quite simple. First criteria and objective to sell the property was, it's the highest and best use for the city of Bryan. I'm not making that up, that happened twelve years ago. Highest and best use for the city of Bryan was the first criteria. Second criteria is what's best for the David Betts Double Play Diamond. That is about just a little south of a million dollars in land and in facility. I don't believe I would want to bring something in that would negatively affect that value. The third criteria is what's best for the Betts family. We purchased the land under some interesting, interesting scenarios, actually more by accident because the Bryan Baseball Association and Girl's Softball Association were planning on putting up fields, and then changed that mind, and then we ended up doing this. It's, it's a good thing from our perspective. We are going to continue to pursue that because we have looked into it well, and we'll see what happens as it relates to getting your funding. But I did want to correct, and I appreciated Chad's comments and Pam's of both because they're right. We are friends, and we'll continue, from my perspective, to have that good relationship. But we did not pursue you. I've never pursued anybody. I've had people pursue us, but we have not pursued anybody, so, thank you.
There anybody else who wants to come forward? Okay, we will go to item number four, which is discussion regarding response to Ohio Housing Finance Agency pertaining to Bryan Senior Lofts.
At this point, I think for that discussion and whatever the vote is, I want to refuse myself. I just wanted to correct that one comment, that's all.
Council members, as you recall, we received to the City of Bryan a certified letter that gave you thirty days to respond regarding the potential opposition or also in the positive in favor of letter that would be drafted to the Director of Multifamily Housing, Ohio Housing Finance Agency. Again, that thirty days started February first, so you are within a deadline. Regarding this development, project address was twelve hundred Center Street, Bryan, Ohio, for a number of forty-three units. Developer is St. Mary Development Corporation. Property manager would be MBAH Management, and list architects and contractors on this. So I know at your last council meeting, you motioned the city attorney to draft a letter in opposition should you choose to vote to sign that. Our city attorney has provided that letter. She will read it, I'm assuming, in open record, and then by majority vote, either way that you go, you will choose to sign or not sign, but it has to be by the majority of the four of you.
The letter reads currently, "Mr. David Faust, Director of Multifamily Housing, Ohio Housing Finance Agency, Fifty-Seventh East Main Street, Columbus, Ohio, four-three-two-one-five, regarding Bryan Senior Lofts. Dear Mr. Faust, this letter is in response to your correspondence of February first, two thousand twenty-two. On behalf of the City of Bryan, Ohio, the Bryan City Council wishes to express concerns about the placement and construction of a three-story, forty-three-unit senior housing development. The developer is St. Mary Development Corporation, and the project address proposed is twelve hundred Center Street, Bryan, Ohio. The placement of the proposed project is in an area that would be bordered by the main city recreational park on one side and a housing development which is zoned R1 for single-family residential homes on the other side. The homes in the neighboring development have the highest market value and highest tax base within the jurisdiction of Bryan. A portion of the ground adjacent to the proposed site has just recently been purchased for further development of homes also with high fair market values. Citizens have expressed opposition to the proposed location stating that regardless of the income level or market value, an apartment-style project is not appropriate for the selected location. The greatest concern that has been expressed is the increased amount of traffic. With forty-three units, there would naturally be at least forty-three vehicles with ingress and egress onto the main road, which is Center Street. Traffic on Center Street is already very congested as it is one of the main thoroughfares to the Bryan Elementary, Junior High, and High Schools. Other opinions have been expressed that the ground for the proposed location, being so close to the park, could have been better utilized for further park expansion, and that objective would be hindered by this housing project. Finally, other concerns that were raised by our constituency is concern for having Bryan senior citizens on the third floor in the event of a fire, as well as concerns about having no garage to house cars for elderly individuals in northwest Ohio winters. While we understand the need for senior housing, the proposed location does not seem to be the ideal location for the city of Bryan, Ohio. Sincerely, Bryan, Ohio City Council members." And then there are places for signature. And those opinions were expressed to me through several emails of the citizens of Bryan and other comments that were provided to me to draft the letter.
So council, at this point, if you have any comments or anyone wants to make a motion, you are free to do so.
I will make a motion to sign the letter and send it out. I'm all in favor of senior housing, I'm not in favor of this particular location.
And I will second Judy on that. I feel the same way she does. We need senior housing, I just don't think it's there.
Judy?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes. And next on the agenda is
Any of you two, if you don't want to stay, although the next topic is food trucks, so if anyone has interest, we'd love to hear it. But if any of you want to leave, you are free to do so.
I'll go get John.
Thank you. You guys don't, you have to sign the letter before you leave tonight. Judy, you need to sign before you leave. We are taking a short recess if anyone wants to sit.
All right.
We take a recess.
You can always get a jersey or a sleeve, you can get out from there, everyone. You, there's nothing
No, not for the first
Oh. My chair makes noise, Carrie.
At least that's not on paint.
You all right, Judy? You gonna make it?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
When he was talking about you have seniors and they're very quiet, I thought, he doesn't know me very well.
He hasn't been here.
No, he certainly hasn't.
No.
No comments, Kim.
I'm not saying
Okay. Well, today's the first day I've been out for like five days because of the weather.
We good?
Yes, sir. clerk treasurer's number five.
Okay, next on the agenda is clerk treasurer's report.
The council's been presented with the clerk treasurer's report for the month ending January thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two.
I'll move Dick's out.
I'll second.
John?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes. Next on the agenda is ordinance, lawyers please have a read.
Ordinance number ten, two thousand twenty-two, an ordinance to amend Bryan Municipal Code Section seven-seven-three of the City of Bryan Codified Ordinances pertaining to temporary stores and transient dealers, and adding regulations pertaining to food trucks and rescinding any section inconsistent therewith.
Oh, sorry, council, I was distracted by the hallway. This is a second reading for this ordinance. I will tell you, maybe Rhonda could go over the two edits she made. One, she had not put food truck in one of the sections, so go ahead.
I apologize, we had three people proofread this, but in section
Just go over it one.
Correct.
Hey, I gave you full credit. I said, "Mr. Betts called me Friday night," and
So in section seven-seven-three-point-oh-two, license required, we added the words "food truck." So it will read, "No person shall engage in operating a temporary store, transient business, or food truck within the city without first obtaining a license from the mayor." And then, under section seven-seven-three-point-oh-five, I had a three where the five should be, so we corrected that to match what it states in section six.
And I just want to go over, I don't know how many of you saw your city email today, there was a constituent that reached out to all of you, and while I can't speak to everything that was in that email, if I said, which I'm going to believe her that I did, that they need to own property in order to operate a food truck, that was not my intent. I believe I said they could put it on private property. What I meant by that was if they wanted to coordinate with Eagles and put it on the back of their lot, or if they wanted to coordinate with Ice House, they had Pences out there, or the Marathon Station has a food truck out on occasion, so does Best One Tire. So I was more suggesting find a private business owner that has a parking lot that you can operate from for the long hours that you chose. I wasn't intending to tell someone they had to buy property in the city in order to operate a food truck, and I don't believe this ordinance says that. And when I say, you know, we have to respect brick and mortar and food trucks, like, I like food trucks, I think everyone on council is eating from a food truck in their lifetime. I just try to give you guys the unintended consequences that may come up when legislation is introduced. So I'm not always saying for or against, and I would welcome input from the council members, even if you just want to have another reading on this or table it. But just to give us as the administration some things that maybe you don't like in the ordinance, or maybe you do like in the ordinance, I will still say that I think it's a little dangerous having a food truck in a parallel parking space on Main and High. I think that they're too wide for that. But that's me, and if you guys choose to do something differently, we will figure it out here on an administrative level to make it the safest way we can. The background checks, again, we do that for anyone that's going door-to-door for sales in the city, so it would just kind of mimic that, making sure that they could pass the background check that's done locally through our police department at no charge to them. The licensing, again, is a nominal fee, and it's once a year. I can tell you, Kiwanis did reach out to me. I did tell them, I don't, I don't think the popcorn truck is what we considered a food truck. So for me, as the mayor, while I'm the mayor, they will be exempt from that twenty-five-dollar charitable fee because they sell popcorn at football games and bandstand, and it all goes back into the community, so they're, they're not even making a profit on that, so.
So there is going to be a background check done? Because I didn't see that in this one. I saw it in the other one, but I read this three times, and I could not find it unless I missed it. And then if there is going to be a background check, what kind of, I mean, what's the criteria? I mean, is it misdemeanors? Is it, I mean, how many years back are you going to go? What's the severity? Is there like a written rule as to someone with a food truck, they can't have a misdemeanor of a domestic violence, or?
Yeah, Rhonda, can you find that in there?
It's not, no, we didn't put that in there. We didn't, we did not put this in there.
We didn't? So we're not going to do background checks then?
We can do it. This is, this was a draft to bring this idea forward, so we need to talk about, do we want to do that? What is the extent of that? Do we want to make this an annual fee? Is it a one-time fee? I mean, that's what this was to promote, was that discussion.
So I guess, what's your flavor for that? Because I do think background checks are somewhat important when we have people operating and families going up to them, but
I guess if I'm going to vote on a background check, I want to have a criteria set up as to whether it's going to be a five-year, a seven-year. What's misdemeanor? What misdemeanor are you going to take? You know, I mean, you can get a felony for DUI in Michigan, so how are you going to regulate what comes up with that? I mean, that's what I want to know, because I'm not going to vote on something, I want to, I want to see it written out, what you're going to do for a background check.
Sure. I think in the past, if anything has come back that has been any kind of criminal charge, whether it be misdemeanor or not, like, say, domestic violence assaults, those kind of things, I usually run it past our prosecutor and, and get her feeling for it. It's not something that you know laterally, like, and I don't know that going back seven years is necessary, but I do think like two or three
Okay, that's what I was wondering, if we're going to set criteria?
And you can set those parameters. I mean, you guys can have a say on, you go back one year, or five years, or two years, like, we can talk about that, that's what this is for, we really want to have those discussions.
So how are you going to differentiate between the people in the Jubilee and the day in the park that are on food trucks compared to the ones that are going to come?
So, we actually waive all of those requirements if they're set through the chamber. That's kind of written in there. I think amphitheater was also written in there, because we do have food trucks at the amphitheater, day in the park, Jubilee, sprinkling. And then, the other criteria here is too, and this is something I haven't communicated with the county yet, because I wasn't sure. I mean, we can go on with the way that it is right now, where it's, I guess, if you want to put a food truck up there, it's not my preference, but there's nothing in the rules to say you can't, like, specifically for High Street and Main Street parking spaces. But the county, and I think a lot of the public isn't aware of this, and you guys are well aware because of the door conversation, but the county owns the inner parking spaces around the square, and so the farmer's market won't be impacted if the county commissioners are still giving permits for food trucks. And, and those kind of things won't be impacted outside of, we would ask them to come get the background check if that's criteria that council put in. So...
Okay.
But as far as them getting a permit to use those parking spaces, they would, they have in the past gone to the county commissioners for that request.
Okay, and then in here, it also, it has like, it's $25 per day? So, if they're doing Memorial Day, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, they're going to pay $100 then? Could it be 25 per day?
That's where we say that can literally be an annual fee or a bi-annual fee. Like, we took some language that was available, kind of drafted it, and wanted you guys to input in it a lot. I don't think anybody's married to a lot of this.
Because I just have, I mean, everybody wants to make a buck, but I'm also kind of like, you can't, when it's an outdoor event, you can't control the weather.
Right.
I'm thinking, this poor person just spent 50 bucks for a two-day thing, and it was a rainout, and they just lost 50 bucks, plus the whatever food they had, if it wasn't, you know, perishable, they've lost that too. I'm just looking out for the little guy, I guess.
Well, no, and I think an annual fee would be better for everyone.
Like, a one-time fee for the whole year? Like, from January 1st to January 1st, then?
Yeah.
Or from whenever they apply? Like, if they apply May 25th, it's good to the following May 25th?
That's typically what we do with the solicitation for businesses, is it's a one-year from the date they...
Okay. I just have heard so many people about this, that's why I was just asking so many questions.
Which is why we wanted to introduce this way, so that you guys had the opportunity to talk to people that own food trucks or businesses.
Yeah, I'm actually for keeping them off of high and main in front of the brick and mortar.
Yes.
I, I think, I think that's, that's a good idea. And I'm not opposed to the, the $25 a day. But I guess that's discretionary, I guess, and I, I agree with background checks. How far we go back, I mean, is really up to you, what your feelings is on that. The offense is another big one, you know, what's the offense?
Do you want to, do you want to set that criteria?
Well...
Because it sounds like there's some concern about just, and I understand it, the whole...
I just want a criteria to run one.
They're in this position, can pick and choose things, and I don't think that's happened in the past for sure, but...
My only thing with the background check is the guy that owns it's clean, but his wayward nephew that works it is the one that has been in and out of jail 14 times, and they're trying to give him another opportunity, you know? So, the guy that you're actually dealing with could be the criminal, but the guy owning it's got a background check. So, I'm not sure that that's going to do any good, but...
Yeah, I think, I guess we'd have to see how that goes, but I do know, like, there's, there's probably, we're running a risk of some of these background checks not coming out positively for the person that's operating it.
Okay.
And knowing that, I guess, how do we go forward where we're making sure we're providing a safe place for families to go up and do something and not worry about the liability the city might have with giving them a permit? And then, the other piece is, if you have eight food trucks in the back of one of the city parking lots, like, that takes all the parking away from other people. I guess that was the other piece in there we were talking about with right-of-ways. We've got to discuss that too.
One thing that I wanted, you know, and maybe having an annual fee will take care of it, but I know myself as a contractor, if I'm working on a job site and I've got 30 minutes to have lunch, I'm either going to pack, or if they have a food truck, that's a real savior.
Sure.
And so, because till I jump in my car, run to McDonald's, sit in line for 10 minutes, and then get my meal, my lunch is already over. So, I would, whatever we do, I want to make sure that those food trucks that go to the job sites are protected, because that is a real service for those, those people that are working those jobs. And I do have one, one, it's just a clerical thing, there's the use of license and the use of...
Yeah, that's been...
That's been changed.
They will get the license, yes.
Okay.
So, I guess, Rhonda, we want to discuss, I guess, possible criteria with background checks?
Well, I would highly suggest that we're not going to allow them, if there's any type of sex offense on there regardless of when that occurred. And then, I would probably suggest going back 10 years for any criminal misdemeanor offense or felony traffic offense. And they would, I think we should have something on the permit form that's, you know, you have to provide a valid license, because obviously they're contriving in our jurisdiction.
Sure.
So, that, that would be my suggestion.
And I'm assuming that the health department monitors these food trucks, that they are licensed.
Yes, I think they have a vendor's license.
And one question I had was, should we have something in there regarding waste, wastewater, and water supply? In other words, I don't think we want them running their wastewater down the store.
They typically have to provide their own, with the exception of, I think, with day in the park, we created some areas for them. Is that, you two had, no?
Not me.
Not you? Do you, Ben?
Their wastewater? And is that an issue?
Not wastewater.
They recycle it.
They have water hookups for them out at 30-day in park.
Yeah, they may have a hose going into the drain, possibly.
For their wastewater?
No, they tank it and carry it off-site.
So, they, they store it and then, kind of like a motorhome or something?
And out there at amphitheater right now...
You've got to go to the podium. Chris can't hear you if you're not up there.
At the amphitheater, at this point, we have power. We do not have water hookups. So, a lot of them that come to us at the amphitheater, they bring their own generators, they bring their own water, they kind of do all of that. Our hope is down the road to be able to provide some of that stuff, but for right now, they have to be self-contained. They have to be able to operate everything from within their unit, and everybody we've worked with so far has the ability to do that.
Do we, do we need a statement, or is it...
Usually Jeffrey communicates that with any food truck person that's coming, or Ben does, whoever's taking that email.
Yeah, up to this point, we've told anybody that we've worked with, when you come, you have to be self-contained. They know that.
Okay, so I'll just handle that on your end?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Which also, I will say, the amphitheater piece, Jeffrey coordinates that, Ben coordinates that, that's not just people showing up the day of event and saying, hey, I'm here. Like, there has to be an application process that goes through the park for that. They have to basically be invited to do that. And, and that's not happening on day in the park, because we want to make sure the day in the park vendors get, I mean, that's a fundraiser for them, so we don't want to compete with them.
What do you want for the application process? Like, do you want to have something in the ordinance for 30-day, or two weeks, or what do you need?
As far as the application, I think I can have Christie send you what we do for transient business, and it's a one-year. And honestly, there's a piece in there for dispatch to stamp on, we did the background check and it's clear, or they call and say, hey, this came up in the background, if something came up. So, we take a photo of their driver's license as well and just keep that in a police file and then my file. That way, if we get complaints about someone soliciting, we can say yes or no, they've gotten their permit.
Let me clarify my question. I'm asking for the timeframe for the process. So, if they come to you and they want to have a food truck next to you, do you want to have, require them to have at least 30 days?
I think 30 days is appropriate in case I might be out of town, or, you know, go on a work trip, but if it's, I mean, we can also call the council president.
I mean, you may be able to do it sooner, but you want to be able to give yourself at least 30 days to complete the application process.
Yeah.
And that would entail getting the health department call as well?
Well, we could put in this ordinance too, that they have proof of the health department inspection and license.
Yeah, they should, you know, there should be a license that's, I assume the health department does that.
You, oh, fire chief's got something on that.
So, with food trucks, there's actually code in the Ohio Fire Code that addresses food trucks, as well as some of the safety issues, parking locations. There's some things that are there, but the health department license is not something we're specifically looking at. We're actually getting calls from these folks that are building these to have us look at them, because the health department is requiring a fire inspection to approve them, that they've met the other requirements in the Fire Code prior to issuing their food license. So, there, there are a number of controls that are already in place with these food trucks. There are some safety issues that they've looked at. It's primarily with the LP tanks that they're using for heating, that's where they've seen most of the problems, and parking issues. Those have been specifically addressed, but what you're really looking at, I think, is the control of where they are within the larger scope. We do have some ability to enforce some of those things as well.
That's good to know.
And I think that, you know, where it says IE special events, like, for example, we don't know how many future special events are going to happen, and I think it would be really cool if a place like the Eagles put a food truck alley in their back parking lot and had a weekend like Battle of the Burger, and you got your sides and your drinks or whatever from there. Like, that's why I think it's for example, because there's potential future cool things. Or maybe they contact us and say, this event is going to be in a city right-of-way in the city lot by the Eagles. It gives us the flexibility on an average day to not do it, so that there's plenty of parking, but if the facility's coming and saying, hey, we want to put this on city property, and it's this big event and this is what we're doing, it gives the option to waive that requirement of not being on the city right-of-way and actually issue the permit.
For instance, if they had something in conjunction with an event at the amphitheater?
Correct.
I have a couple of things. One, first and foremost, I never got this email that this woman sent. So, I, that continues to be an ongoing issue, actually creating issue for me, so I'll bypass that, but was there other people? Were there other comments that, that, I mean...
I got, I got a couple of phone calls, and once we started talking about, you know, what the right-of-way meant and why, I felt it was important on that area, so they agreed. I think people want us, again, to be kind of food truck friendly. I did have one person questioning the background check conversation on what that would entail, and to be honest, I couldn't be very clear with them, because I didn't know what that would entail yet until we got to that point of discussion.
Well, then, I guess I would at least suggest that we look at this as another third reading, specifically since it seems as though we have some specifics that have been brought up here that need to be fleshed out. It seems as though, if I heard him correct me correctly, and I perhaps did not, I definitely, and, and I understand, thank you, Chief Poole, but I definitely, there needs to be in the application that you got to have a health license or health certificate. You have to go through the fire department first and then get it. I don't really give to shakes, but I do absolutely believe that is extreme liability to this city without that, so that would be a given for me. The background checks, in my estimation, if Rhonda believes 10 years is the appropriate time, she would know better than that, better than I, so I'm not going to deal with the time element. However, I, I would, instead of, and I'm okay with this if people want to spell it out, but sometimes this gets really involved. Instead of that, it seems as though the point behind this is city liability. She is our city attorney. I believe if we put something in there that to, to get this food truck license, instead of just doing it the way it's been done in the past, we actually have a writing that must be taken by the city attorney for her perusal review. That would at least say, hey, our city attorney looked at it, she felt as though what she found was a rapist versus someone who had a DUI eight years ago and felt comfortable with the one and not the other. That's just my general thought on that. The last one, I think, was, oh, the right-of-way, the number, and where? I, I, I say, you, you guys tell me. I mean, that's like, it seems like that the admin would have a better handle on, hey, and I definitely support the, the piece of certain places, no. On Main Street, et cetera, that, that seems like a nightmare to me. So, I would be against that, but I think you brought up a good point. Do we have eight or 10 food trucks set up behind seasons? Do we have three? Do we have four? I would prefer a recommendation from city administration saying, we believe that we should set, you don't have to be that specific, that we will determine how many is appropriate at that time when you apply, and if we feel as though there's too many there now, we're going to tell you, you can't go there, but you can go here. Does that make, I'm just trying to make some common sense.
Yeah, but then that, we have to really clean up, because right now, it says no city property or right-of-ways, unless it's a special event determined by the mayor, you know, regarding the chamber. And I know, I'm going to tell you, it, it appears, you know, with the way these ordinances are written, which is the way the whole charter is written, where it says the mayor gives authority, the mayor does this, that's common. It's not because I like to, and honestly, everything that I'm issuing, I confer with city attorney, and a lot of times, finance or engineering, or, there's more than just me making that decision, because there's a lot of other people that are going to have more knowledge, and, I mean, there could be a case where she's prosecuted and goes, yeah, they did have that, but, I mean, there's, there's some consistency in that conversation. And the other piece is issuing the permits, like, I do what I can to reduce city liability versus expose us to more issues, I guess. That's part of some of my role here in the city as the mayor, and so it's not a, Carrie Schleid is garnering power by saying the mayor has to do this. It's just the way the charter is, and the way the charter is written, and what's in the job description of the mayor. And with that being said, like, when I'm not mayor and when you're not council, I do like things buttoned up a little tighter, so that everyone knows this council and administration's true intent, because people can abuse that. And I go back to, and I know this is a long speech, but I go back to when we were under the emergencies, you know, federally and state, and we did a city emergency for the pandemic, and it said in our charter that the mayor could suspend gas sales and gun sales, and I was sitting in Rhonda's office reading this going, this is insane, that one person can make these kind of decisions. Do you remember my shock, that I was kind of disgusted that one person can do that? And I didn't, that wasn't the goal of it, but the charter does allow it in some areas, and so does the revised code, so...
Well, my point is, let's button it up and bring it back for a third reading.
Yeah.
That's my thought, here, okay.
So, I mean, back to the criminal pieces, is 10 years too long? Is it enough?
I actually, I mean, Mary was kind of adamant about having parameters, but I actually prefer it to come to me, because, give me, let me give you an example. If we, if we say no criminal misdemeanors, somebody got a charge for passing a bad check nine years ago, they're not going to be able to get a license.
Where we would have in the past...
I would like to be able to tell the mayor, you know, this is something that can be sealed, and I think they've paid their dues and...
And that's what my concern is, I don't want someone, because they got a misdemeanor, to be disqualified, and it wasn't a violent misdemeanor, but it was passing bad checks, or, who knows what? Shoplifting 10 years ago, I mean...
No.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I'm afraid of, is, is people being disqualified for things. That's why I want to have a set line on what we're doing.
Well, I think that would be more easily met by having the ability for us to review it, though, rather than setting a parameter.
Yes.
I think so.
Because if you leave it the way that we do the solicitations right now, if it's a violent assault, that's a no. If it's a passing bad check, yes, you can have your permit, but if we put the description in there, then the pass... But if we put the description in there, then the passing of that check is like, no, you can't get a permit because these are the guidelines. So sometimes that's why we do.
I understand where you're going.
Leave the vagueness in there.
I have a couple of things that I just wanted to get clarified in my mind. One of them is in section seven, seven, three point oh four of the exceptions. Says this chapter shall not apply to persons selling by sample only. I'm not sure what that is.
Well, I think once in a while people, like maybe an Avon one person or Mary Kay. I mean, you know, sometimes they go to homes and, I mean, if, if that's all they're doing.
That helps me. And also in that same section, it says, nor do sales pursuant to the order of any court of competent jurisdiction.
Where are you?
Second line down. Second line down, it starts, nor, nor do sales pursuant.
I guess if there's any kind of court order, you know, if somebody had some kind of court order, I, I'm just saying that we wouldn't violate any kind of court order.
Okay. And the final thing that I have, and this came to me from a concerned constituent, that is, the twenty-five dollars, they were concerned about, for instance, the, the fireman's auxiliary chicken barbecue. Are they going to be twenty-five bucks in order to do that? I, I, I mean.
Yeah, I think the fee is there again for the background purpose that we talked about and brought up at that meeting. And I can only speak while I'm mayor, but there's a lot of charitable organizations that are just going to get waived. Like, we're going to come up here and say, you need to get through this background process. But same thing, I think the Wesley Church does a chicken barbecue. I would consider that the same.
Voice outs, things like that.
Yeah. I, I think if they can prove they give one dollar back to the Brian community, it's going to be.
Who wants to make a buck, I say we charge them two.
It's actually his wife that is in charge of the ladies auxiliary.
I know, that's why I said that.
And they are taking applications, if any ladies want to come help, ladies, et cetera. So I guess, keeping that, if we add the background, even if you add a point where it says to be reviewed by, reviewed by the city attorney, is that enough for you guys to be comfortable with that? So there's more than one pair of eyes?
Yeah, that's good.
Okay. And then twenty-five, four fifty annually?
I like the annual.
Okay. And then the other part is, I mean, are you okay with saying, go find someone's private property if that's going to be your primary every Friday on here down at Best One Tire? Are you, or do you want us to carve out an area that's going to take out parking in the city lots? Because some of those city lots can't handle a food truck during the day. Like, I, if you drive by some of those city lots during the day, I can tell you they don't have room. That's me. You guys were discussing, so open that up.
My concern is enforcement, yes.
Well, it's the police department, if they don't have a permit or if they're somewhere in the wrong place.
I guess I'm thinking if I, if I paid my annual fee and I parked there, I, who's keeping track of how often?
That's, that's my issue.
Well, I think that one thing I can tell you, even with the solicitor permit, there have been plenty of times that someone has called the PD or the PD has noticed someone out walking around. And both, like, the mayor's office has a file of the driver's license and the permit, but so does the police department. And so they just go and check, do I have this person's name? Do I have this picture? Have they signed the permit through the mayor's office? No, they have not. Okay, you guys have to go get a permit from the mayor's office. Saturday, she's closed, you got to go. That's typically the way it happens for the solicitation. Same thing, I think, would apply for the food truck.
Maybe I misunderstood the question. I was, I was thinking somebody that every Friday they're parking in the same spot and you don't want that. That they can do it once, but they can't do that every week.
Depends, if it's on city property or private property. If it's on a business owner's private property and they're letting them do it, I mean, they can do it every night of the week. Like, in my opinion, but if you guys think some.
No, I'm good with that. But on city property, I mean, it's got to be, what, twenty-five dollars a day?
You guys. Oh.
Right now it's worth it.
Come on up. It's fine. Do you guys mind? This is Annette Shiner, she is on your Board of Public Affairs, if you haven't met her.
Yay.
I guess I should let Mr. Kozinfleck decide if you come on up here. Sorry.
You're allowed.
I just have a quick question, I guess a comment. You guys are questioning where they can park. If they're going to pay a twenty-five dollar fee or per day thing, should we provide, be providing them a map where they can park or where they'd be allowed to park? And if it's available?
Or a parking pass?
Parking pass.
Do the engineering department.
I'm just saying, you hate to forgive, make them pay it.
Right.
Yeah, they should have a, where they can go where they can't go.
They go to that spot and it's not available, or it's better to keep track of them, I guess.
Yeah, so I guess my thought process is, if it's on private property, it's on private property. But if it's on city property, are we allowing that or are we only allowing that for special events? Because that, I guess, was the crux of this. I think the city administration's intention was to only allow food trucks within city parking lots and right of ways during special permitted events versus every day.
And that's where, how you were going to run that through the chamber, correct?
Not just the chamber. I mean, if the Eagles comes up with a food truck party, we can work with that. The amphitheater, work with that. And I am, whether I get criticism on this or not, I think that our baseball and soccer and softball associations do a whole lot for our community of kids on park property. And I'm not okay with a food truck going up and setting up right beside their concession stand. That's their one, one of their fundraisers every year. When they purchase food for that ball game or that softball game and just, we let somebody else come in and say, but I've got better hot dogs and Kona ice. I mean, I don't think that's creating a good partnership between the softball and soccer and baseball associations and all the other associations when they've got that concession stand that they fundraise out of. So that's part of why I say in the park on special events only. There's, there's a reason for it.
I agree, I agree with the device and the map for, like, the around the square, right off the square. These are their permitted places. Can we do that, like we did the Dora?
I mean, the problem is I can't control a private property owner allowing it or not.
If I may. We've talked about Main Street and High Street, parking on the street, like in the 100 blocks. I disagree with that. That's chaos.
Yeah, I, I.
And I almost disagree with, I know food trucks are meant to park on the street and that's the purpose of them. But I don't know where they're going to park downtown during the day. Has anybody been downtown at the lunch hour? I mean, everything's packed. And the city lots, I call it the Gornies Lot, well, you know, that's packed. You're, you're not going to be able to get a food truck in there. You know, behind Seasons, that's a small lot, the larger lot to the south, you might be able to get a food truck in there. And I think what our intention was, was to allow like a special event. If, let's say somebody wanted to set up one food truck in a city lot, maybe we could allow the mayor that discretion to authorize that and allow that on a one-time basis and see how it works. But I don't think we should carte blanche, just say, you can park in any city lot you want. I, I just, I don't, just my personal opinion.
Sure.
I just think it's going to start to be chaos. And, you know, and the, the lot across the street from the Eagles, next to Four Seasons, that's fairly open throughout the day. So, I mean, that wouldn't be too bad to throw a truck in there or two. But then, you know, and that's farther away maybe from, you know, the brick and mortar downtown businesses we want to try and support. But I think that's what our purpose was, was to try and allow the mayor to have some discretion for a special event. Would, would a special event be just a one-time thing, like, hey, let's try this? But I know Nickerson Barbecue used to come uptown all the time when he was in. He parked next to the marathon station. The gal from Montpelier that does the pizzas, she's at Best One Tire, yeah, a couple of times a week in the summertime a lot, or spring and fall, when she's out on the road, she's not. But there, there's another veteran, that retired guy that has barbecue, that he parks, I'll call it the old Nichols Bakery parking lot. He's there a lot, you know. So there's places on private property, and I don't care about that because Best One Tire's got plenty of room and these other private businesses have plenty of room for this. But I cringe a little bit by allowing it on city streets. And I know it, it'll probably work, but if you're going to try and find the spot and then you're going to have people trying to park to get there, you know, may, maybe flip side, it is good. Maybe they do have to park two blocks away to walk and get there. And maybe they'll decide to stop at Cora's or Seasons on the way through and eat there, you know, I, I don't know. But just the feasibility, we, we don't really have a lot of walking traffic downtown necessarily, I don't think, for lunch. So I, I think it's going to be an issue on the public rights of ways. And that was our original intent, I believe, so.
No, that's okay.
Thank you, Fred.
What about like a designated day or two of the week and do like a food truck alley?
See, that would be a special, well, there would be a special event.
Yeah, so then.
I don't know, just throw it out there.
No, yeah, there's a portion in here that says, you know, if deemed a special event, they can get, you know, granted operated on a city property, city property located within the city right of way during those times. And I'll give you a perfect example. One of our most recent requests was they're going to have a farmer's market in a downtown business and, you know, I'm not opposed to considering that a special event. And, yeah, you can have a couple parking spots on that Saturday in the back lot, city lot. But again, having it on Main Street. I, I could be wrong because Brian, Brian knows I'm a visual person and he has to on occasion go with me and walk down the square so I can see things. But I just think food trucks are too wide for those spots and the semi-traffic coming through.
What if we had like a designated, designated area as to where they could be at?
Well, and to be honest, the City of Defiance has that, but it's on a private business owner's lot. Like, they made their own little area over where my apartment, Patty, used to be when I was a kid.
Oh, yeah.
The car wash.
Yeah, I don't even know if they do that anymore because that was a controversy.
Yeah.
So theoretically, special event only, right? Not on Main and High. And they want to park on the square, they got to go to the commissioners and park on the interior part of the courthouse square.
With the exception of special events.
Okay, yep.
Right, so I'm, this is how I'm foreseeing this for the chamber. Mr. Yarris is going to give the city a list of, these are the people we have. And then.
Sure.
I guess there's got to be a discussion here as to whether we say, hey, you got to get an annual permit for fifty dollars or if we waive it, that's something we haven't really talked about.
And I agree.
Because I don't know what the, I haven't talked to the chamber about, you know, do you charge base for those food trucks? Are they already incurring a fee? I, I don't know that.
They do, they get charged per linear foot, right now.
I'm not all that interested in taking money away from the chamber.
No, and I think that's what our, that's.
I just thought I'd throw it out there.
Yep.
I mean, that's kind of why that's in there. But I, so we've hashed out the background checks, is everyone satisfied with the way that might be rewritten? And then, I've heard two different things for annual fees versus day.
I like the annual.
That's fine.
Okay, so everyone can kind of agree to annual?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
We can write in there that there's required proof of health department license and fire department inspection, although we'll be able to call the fire department and see if they don't have a copy of that. And so I guess the, the one thing I'm not clear on, and maybe Rhonda's not clear on a few other things, but again, with the city parking lots and the city right of ways, like, is council okay with only making that for special events at the discretion of city administration? Or do we want to say on this area of city parking, you can go here? I, I guess, I, I think everybody's kind of mixed on that.
I think right now, with my personal feeling, for now, let's get the ordinance in place. If we want to modify it down the road, but let's not make it too complicated at this point.
Yeah, I, I agree with the discretion. I mean, if they come to you, you make the call. As long as it's in a designated approved area.
Once this is in, in the works, then we can see how it's going to go. And if we get complaints or suggestions, we can kind of modify from there, I would think.
Yeah.
Can we do this like we did the Dora, like for six months and figure out, see how it goes over the summer and see if we need to make amends later?
I don't think we really need to. If you want to, if you want to amend something, I'll just bring the amendment back to you.
Okay.
I think the reason we did that for the Dora for a year was because the state was involved in the liquor permits. With this, it's more of a, and, and the one thing I would ask, like, if you do get complaints from people, like, please do direct those here. There may be a reasonable explanation that, that we have. Or maybe it is something that's not working. So I certainly think we all welcome those kind of conversations. If, if you hear from someone that's going, I don't think you're being very friendly to the food truck industry. We need to talk about that too. Because I also, I, Mr. Betts, I did forward that to your Gmail account while we were here, so you can read it tonight. I mean, I don't, I don't want anyone to think that we're not food truck friendly. I do think there's a lot of benefit to that. And I think that there's items that we can get on a food truck we can't get anywhere else. But we've got to figure out how to get through this process too. So Rhonda, do you have any more questions or do you?
I might, but I think we can handle it administratively.
All right.
Do you need a motion then to, for a second reading? I move that we approve the second reading with the modifications that we've discussed this evening.
I'll second.
Rick?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
John?
Yeah.
June?
Yes. I have number seven as an ordinance, lawyers, please number and read.
Ordinance number thirteen, two thousand twenty-two. The ordinance providing annual appropriations for the City of Brian for the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two, and declaring an emergency. This is an appropriation request of eighteen thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars for the General Fund for Urban Recreation Department for amphitheater expenses. These were donations that we received that we are asking to be appropriated. In addition, it is an appropriation request of eighteen thousand, four hundred and sixty-two dollars and seventeen cents for the probation grant, as well as a, an appropriation request of twenty-six thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars and twenty-five cents for the J-Rig grant. Total amount of appropriations requested this evening, sixty-three thousand, one hundred and two dollars and forty-two cents.
Move to suspend.
I'll second.
John?
Yeah.
Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
June?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Mary?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
John?
Yeah.
June?
Yes. I have number eight as an ordinance, lawyers, please number and read.
Ordinance number fourteen, two thousand twenty-two. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Girk and Paving Incorporated for the project known as two thousand twenty-two asphalt program.
We received bids on this project last week. Recommend you award the project to Girk and Paving, five hundred and eighty-three thousand, two hundred and thirty-nine dollars and fifty cents. As you recall, we're going to be working not necessarily in the downtown core, but in the central business district for the most part. And we're going to be redoing one parking lot behind the east side of the square buildings, putting a curb island down the middle of it and working with the Parks and Rec and City Arborist right now with what type of landscaping trees or whatnot we're going to put in there. But that's not part of the contract, we've still got time to figure that out in there. But the look of the lot will be similar to between Four Seasons and the Eagles, with a long curb island down the middle of it as a buffer there. So, and then obviously that concrete ledge in the middle of this parking lot is going to go away. We're going to taper that down and get rid of it. So it'll be a smoother transition between the two parking lots. Should open up a couple extra spots for us. But I would request you suspend and authorize me to proceed.
I'll move to suspend.
I'll second.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yeah.
June?
Yes.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
John?
Yeah.
Mary?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
June?
Yes.
Thank you.
I have number nine as an ordinance, lawyers, please number and read.
Ordinance number fifteen, two thousand twenty-two. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Griffin Pavement Striping LLC for the project known as two thousand twenty-two pavement marketing program.
Well, same thing as before, we received bids last week on this. Griffin Pavement, paving striping, they've done this project for us years. Used to be Zimmerman Striping before, they were recently bought out. But again, they were the lowest bid. I've done it several times, just under a hundred and five thousand dollars. I would request you suspend.
Move to suspend.
I'll second.
John?
Yeah.
Mary?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
June?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
I'll second.
Rick?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
John?
Yeah.
June?
Yes.
Thank you.
I have number ten as an ordinance, lawyers, please number and read.
Ordinance number sixteen, two thousand twenty-two. An ordinance demanding Brian modify ordinance section nine twenty-nine point zero three eight.
I have number ten as an ordinance. Lawyers, please number and read.
Ordinance number sixteen, 2022. An ordinance demanding Brad Bryant clarify ordinance section 929.03A, B, and F pertaining to residential, commercial, and industrial sewer rates within the City of Bryant, and repealing existing section 929.05A, B, and C pertaining to residential, commercial, and industrial sewer rates outside the city, and repealing existing section 929.05A, B, and C.
Surprise. Obviously, this is an increase in sewer rates to cover the upcoming projects that we have heading our way out of the wastewater treatment plant. We've already discussed it with you, and John Courtney was here last time around, gave you a breakdown on it. We're recommending that we move ahead with it, and that'll allow us to get going. We know we've got financing secured for the projects that are on their way.
And I just would like to add, I asked Lisa from Lori's staff to compile and compute what those rates would be for the top highest users in Bryant, taking their December bill, estimating that for April and December usage on what those increases would look like, and then Wes and I communicated with the top five rate payers in business last week for that, and as well, the county engineer. There is one company that we have not been able to get a phone call back from, but the other have either spoken to both of us or received an email from me on those, so they're aware that council was seeing this this evening and voting on this ordinance, and while no one thanked us for a rate increase, I mean, most, we've pretty much mostly gotten understanding. We were able to describe the next projects coming through, and so there's an understanding of, there's a cost of service to this.
I move to suspend.
I'll second.
John?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
June?
Yes.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
June?
Yes. I have number eleven as an ordinance. Lawyers, please number and read.
Ordinance number seventeen, 2022. An ordinance authorizing the construction manager at risk CMAR delivery method for the wastewater treatment plant de-watering improvement project, and authorizing the agreement with Peterson Construction Company as a construction manager at risk.
Dub tailing with the last ordinance we just discussed. We have gone through the selection process for our CMAR, and we had two good companies there. After everything shakes out, Peterson has come out and on top for us, and we would like to recommend that if you agree that we move ahead with signing contract with them for the CMAR process. We'll begin design after agreement tonight, if you all are okay with it.
Did you say you worked with Peterson before?
We have, yeah, we have a long history with them. They actually built the building and installed the equipment that'll be coming out and being replaced. One of the guys that will be there as project foreman was actually a laborer on the job and set the equipment that's sitting there. He was complaining about getting old.
I'll move to suspend.
I'll second.
Rick?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
June?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
June?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Wes. Thank you, Wes. I have number twelve as an ordinance. Lawyers, please number and read.
Ordinance number eighteen, 2022. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with West Erie Realty Solutions LTD for the right-of-way acquisition services for the City of Bryant Safe Routes to School Infrastructure Improvements Project, WIL-STRS Bryant City Schools PID 113489 project.
Lori basically said what we're doing. We need to, we had to do a qualification process on this because ODOT and federal funds are being used and so forth for the project, so we went over this a month or two ago when I asked for permission to go out and look for this. So we only had one contractor submit, and we worked with them before, so we need to, we need to authorize this so I can start entering into negotiations with them and start the process.
Move to suspend.
I'll second.
John?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
June?
Yes.
Motion to approve. I'll second.
Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
June?
Yes.
We're ready to get out of here tonight, aren't we?
You know, reach the tower.
I have number thirteen as a resolution. Lawyers, please number and read.
Resolution number fifteen, 2022. A resolution authorizing the director of Parks and Recreation for the City of Bryant to apply for grants for the City of Bryant.
Good evening. These would just be a few of the grants that we would apply for throughout the course of 2022. We need your permission to move forward with these.
I'll move to suspend.
I'll second.
Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
June?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Greg.
You have to be quick if you want to beat Mary.
Lori with her writing.
Either get on, either run your horse or get off.
Item number fourteen is a resolution.
It's Mary and I screwing around if you're out.
Resolution number sixteen, 2022. A resolution to appoint individuals to serve as point of contact, account administrator, or and reporting representatives to the Treasury for Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds, SLFRF, from the American Rescue Plan Act.
Okay, I'm going to go with, this is me. So I asked legal counsel to draft this ordinance because with the ARPA funding, there are more requirements, and it's requiring the clerk treasurer, myself, and the fire chief to go in and submit a lot of information, and so before we get too far in that process, we really just wanted council to understand this is for that $800 and some thousand dollars, that's the only reason that we're doing it. They have required us to take some administrative roles on behalf of the city, which was not what they did with the coronavirus relief. So with that, we're asking for you to name myself, the mayor, as account administrator, chief pool as the contact reporting representative, and clerk treasurer, Roddy, the SLFRF authorizing reporting representative for those, any of those.
Rick?
I'll move to a suspend.
Second.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
June?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
I'll second.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
June?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
I'll second.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
June?
Yes.
All right, next up is 2021 Annual Reports. Looks like fires going first.
Yep, I'm trying.
Well, she's going through that. I'll say Ben and Tyson are both saying the same thing. You've got to report, so any questions?
None.
Okay.
I paid them all $5 to say that. It's under the ethics of our...
Okay. I have changed the slideshow a little bit, just so it's a little easier to read. You have the full script in front of you. I'm just going to move through our vision statement again. Thanks to Chief Siders for really setting me up with this and leaving me a good template to work with. Our emergencies, as you can see this year, we are up considerable from last year to down 2021, or 2020. We're over 500 calls for the first time ever. We're getting busier, and that trend typically works after about a five-year cycle, it'll drop back off, but we're probably going to see at or above 500 calls for the next several years.
All right. I'm glad.
Our fire instance, a lot of these are staying pretty similar. We're not seeing a lot of differences in the calls. You'll notice that rescue emergency services are about a third of what we do. That's everything from car accidents to lift assist with EMS, but that's what keeps us the busiest. Long breakdown, gets down to it, 25 building fires last year. We're on that kind of pace again this year, unfortunately. Mutual aid, where we're going, most of our calls are in the City of Bryant. We do have contract services with Palisquay Township, Center Township, Hillside, and Jefferson Township, that's the breakdown. Our mutual aid, give and take, it ends up being pretty much a balance. Actually, last year, we got more than we gave, so we did. We appreciate those other departments coming in to help us, but that's probably a reflection of the volume of calls that we answer now. How long does it take us to get there? Hillside's a long way out. Now, it says 21 minutes, that's going to include nighttime, a lot of other variables to that, but best case, that's over 10-minute drive. You just can't get there. In Bryant, we're up over six minutes. Our response times are slowing down. That has reflection to the number of people that we have working on a daily basis, the number of volunteers that we have available, and when they're available, it slows down. Time of day, or when we're actually making our responses, you can see at night, it's a lot longer. Our daytime average, when we're staffed, we start dropping down around that five-minute mark. Anything under eight minutes, we're pretty happy with. Once in a while, we get asked, when are we the busiest? It varies by year. We started out kind of slow last year, it built up. There's really not a lot of rhyme and reason, it's not weather conditions, the weather can have an impact, holidays, everything has a slight impact, but we, we've stayed pretty consistent throughout the year. Day of the week, last year it was Tuesday was our crazy day, and Wednesday was off. This year, Thursday's off, and Friday is our busy day. It bounces. Time of day, this has stayed fairly consistent. We start getting busy around six in the morning, and we taper off around six at night, and then we get a little squirt after that. And that's a lot of the staffing that we've done with full-time is because of that. Been looking at our number of calls balanced out. You see an A shift, B shift, and a 1, 2, 3, 4. We've made some changes to the way that we staffed our volunteers. Due to the reduction, we moved everybody into an A shift, B shift. We're probably going to make more changes this year, to best use that staff to make the calls that we need to make. Our general alarms, that's, we're calling more of those because we don't have the staff to meet the minimum needs, and it just increases that number. Again, our on-duty takes care of a good portion of what's there. Fortunately, most of our fires were unintentional, or un-unfortunately, that means we could have done something to probably prevented those. Working through our prevention, do what we can there. You see, we've got a lot of intentional fires as well, that we do have some things where people went out, done, done things that they knew was going to cause a fire, some of them have been fairly small. They affect everything from parks to private property, so we have that every year, and that's something that we work with law enforcement to try to eliminate. One of those that was in there in the notes is that we did not have any injuries or fatalities last year, which is a good thing. Lot of the different things that we do out of fire prevention, code enforcement, we spend a lot of time out. COVID has really put an impact on us, being able to get out. With the restaurants shut down, we really backed off of them, so that we didn't create more stress than what they already had. We haven't really seen that cause an impact, but we are going to have to get back in so that long-term doesn't create a problem. A lot of people don't know that we also are delegated authority for underground storage tanks, that's the picture here. One of the tanks had a suspected leak, and as part of that, contractor came in, dug it up. We have to be out there and watch them do that, when you file a state report. This is one of the many things that we do. Training, continued to train, last year, 3,220 hours of training. The minimum training to get firefighter in the door is increased by state mandate. What used to be, here's a coat and a helmet, come on out to the fire, it doesn't work anymore. It takes us about eight months to get a firefighter through the program, start to finish, be able to really go fight fires with supervision. Special activities, we are involved with a lot of different things. We go out to different programs throughout the community. We're heavily involved with day and park fireworks, and just one of the many things that we do. I think I stuck this next one in because Wes didn't show the picture that I took last year and put together for me.
It looks good.
This is something, this is something we've been able to do in-house. All that was from aerial photography. We use that for pre-planning, and I think it's just one of the many things that we can do. Our current roster, again, a lot of changes this year with the retiring of Chief Siders, changing, currently have a vacant spot for a captain. We have career firefighters, we are actually one short right now there, not in career, but with our captain. Our paid-on-call numbers are down, we actually have two members there that are going to retire at the end of the month, so that number is going to get smaller yet. One of the programs we picked up last year to try to supplement is we added auxiliary firefighters. We brought some of those folks that are certified, that live here, that can't make the commitment to the time that we've asked for a paid-on-call personnel, and we brought them back in. And if I can get one or two of them to show up, it's helping us over, over the hump. The fire that we had last weekend, I had two of them show up. So again, it was enough to help us out. Members that resigned in the last year, as you can see that list, and retirees, one right So again, looking for new members, and we're really going to start putting some emphasis into this. We want to get out and fit in the community and really let folks know, we need, I still[1613.13] our community, is get more people that are involved with our paid-on-call policies. Any questions?
Make sure you change the contact you.
Yeah, I do. This is on the website still, and I'm still working on that as well. There's a lot of things that need to change that have been there for almost
Yeah, I understand.
Over fifteen years now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're timing you now.
You can put the five-minute timer. Is that the first one?
Well, I mean, you had your beautiful, like, I'm in charge photo.
The employees, that was first. All right, we'll go with winter. There. Last winter, the winter of two thousand twenty-one. We spread close to, or we did spread, seven hundred tons of salt at a cost of thirty-eight thousand eight hundred forty-seven dollars, and applied thirty thousand four hundred gallons of brine at a cost of two thousand eight hundred and fifty-seven dollars. So, that brine works, and it saves us money in salt. This year, we haven't used it yet because of the way the storms have worked. It's rained before every snowstorm, so there's no point in spreading brine. And there's our employees, which you see Steve Warner has over thirty-two years in. He can retire at any time. So, and there are a couple of them that aren't far behind. These are routine duties that we do throughout the year. One highlight on here is the removal of thirty-two hazardous trees last year, and that was with Court making the list. He picked what trees. We cut down and working with the light and water, or the electric department, get those trees down. Next. This says we did not patch any holes with the dirt patcher last year. We did not. We did patch holes with cold mix or the new and improved cold mix, but we did not get the dirt patcher out last year because of staff, staffing shortages and time shortages. Just didn't get it out. And that's just a map of the trash pickup route. Last year, we took three thousand five hundred and sixty-three point five-six tons of trash to the landfill. That's combined between the weekly and the monthly all trash pickup at a cost of three hundred and almost twenty-three thousand dollars. Cemetery, we had fifty-one burials, which is right on the average, and we poured twenty-six bases for the headstones. Now on to recycling. They brought in a total of six hundred and sixty-six thousand eight hundred and sixty-three total pounds. That's what they brought in with the weekly and the monthly pickup, sorted all of it, sold it all, and brought in seventy thousand five hundred and twenty-seven dollars and fifty-three cents. Now, well, it doesn't matter, it's not on there. Doing the quick math with the amount of the tons that they brought in and we didn't take to the landfill, there's another, give or take, forty thousand dollars that you can add to that total sales to make it, that's the total of recycling. Because we didn't spend another forty thousand dollars at the landfill with that. That's what I was trying to say, and I knocked the wind stream.
Sorry, Chris. We are on fire tonight.
That's all I got.
Cremation niches.
Thank you.
Really quick, do you want to tell them those have been installed? Niches? The cremation niches?
The cremation niches are in at the cemetery. We got that done first part of December, so those are in finally, two years, three years later.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Real quickly, for the two thousand twenty-one annual report for the Bryan Parks and Recreation Department, you should have a copy in front of you. The thing I'd like to draw to your attention, first of all, is the numbers we use, a lot of them are estimates, guesstimates. We rely, rely on the people using our facilities to help us with numbers. So, you may come across a number, and it may not be exactly what you remember or what you think. We're working off of the people using our facilities, so we, it tries to give us a good round of number as to what, what we're using. The first slide you should come across is my staff. I can't thank my staff enough. They have a genuine care for what goes on in our department and the looks of our facilities. Obviously, as you know, Court left us in November. April is our new horticulturist, arborist. So far, things are going extremely well. I know Court's enjoying his time in Florida, does not miss the snow, but we do miss him. So, I want to thank Court for his many years of service to our department. Couple boards that are underneath of me, first of all, my park board. They help us with being eyes and ears to the entire operation, ideas, thoughts, signage. They run the whole gamut with us. It's really a sounding board for Bruce and I to work off of, so I want to thank these members. They are great to work with, and we do enjoy having them be part of our decision-making process. The next commission that I work with is the Tree Commission. Again, very informative. They have helped greatly and will continue to help April greatly over the next couple of years as she kind of works her way into her position. You know, Court had a lot of expertise and knowledge when it came to this, so he maybe didn't rely on them as much as what April will over the coming weeks and months and years. So, I do appreciate this, this group. They're very active and are willing to fight for the trees within our community, which we feel is very important. Quickly, total facility usage, guesstimate, again, around one hundred and twenty-eight thousand. I list there the different areas where you see us using, whether it be the pools, the school gyms, East End Community Center, shelters, McDonald Rough, and then our new one is obviously our Fountain City Amphitheater. So, that gives you a good idea of how spread out we are, pretty balanced. The next slide you will see is a comparative five-year average. I caution that the five-year average is a little low. Obviously, some of that pertains to our year with COVID. So, our numbers were way down in two thousand twenty. Due to the COVID, we didn't offer very many things. So, the five-year average might be skewed a little bit. Two thousand twenty-one, we felt like was a pretty good year, starting to, to work back into where we'll be, hopefully, full steam ahead in the year two thousand twenty-two. The next one you have there, I just kind of break apart our shelters and pavilions, show you where we're at. We had about eighteen thousand five hundred people use our shelters and pavilions, East End, Garver, Hit, J.C., Matty Marsh, Moore, Roseland, and then we grouped the ones in Moore Woods together, Pavilions one, two, and three. Again, you can see it's pretty balanced, other than the J.C. Pavilion, and a lot of that has to do with school groups. So, that works out pretty good. Again, five-year average, still a little bit lower in two thousand twenty-one, but a lot of that still pertains to the, to the pandemic, and the five-year average is a little bit lower than what you may normally see specifically because of the pandemic. Two thousand twenty-one, we did open our pools again. We had roughly nineteen thousand pool users. That's from swim lessons to public swim rentals, and then obviously, all of our swim meets and swim team activities and that kind of stuff. Moore Pool is obviously our, our most-used pool, but again, they also host most of our activities, whether it be the swim lessons, whether it be the swim team, that kind of thing. So, we have found over the course of the last couple of years that when East End is open, people do use East End Pool, as long as the two pools aren't competing against each other. So, that's worked out really well for us. Again, in the five-year average, you'll see, two thousand twenty, we had zero. We did not open our pools in two thousand twenty, so it's a little bit skewed, but I want you to be aware of kind of where we sit over the last five years. The last group I broke apart for you was our Fountain City Amphitheater. With it being our first year, I wanted to kind of show you where we were at. We estimate that we had around three thousand people use the amphitheater for concerts, shows, programs, and then we also did worship services out there. Instead of doing percentages, I put the totals alongside them on that pie chart so you could kind of see what our breakdown was as far as who used what. So, that gives you a little bit of idea about the amphitheater. I always include this so you guys can kind of see two thousand twenty-one donations that were brought into the Parks and Recreation Department and what they were brought in for, from trees to benches to bricks, that kind of stuff. The restrooms. So, it kind of gives you an idea of the donations that are coming in on a daily basis to the Parks and Recreation Department in the amount of about seventy-six thousand dollars. So, that is a huge help, and we are very thankful for that. The next one is specifically for our amphitheater sponsors. I wanted to show you exactly who was part of our amphitheater for the year two thousand twenty-one, as far as sponsorship goes, whether it be a corporate sponsor, a booster sponsor, anything along that lines. The amphitheater had a very successful season, and we were extremely pleased with the number of people that were sponsors at the amphitheater. And we've seen that again in the year two thousand twenty-two. Things have gone very well so far, so we're really excited about that. The last thing I have, or last one I have up there is our completion list. Just some of the things, again, I don't put the day-to-day mowing and that kind of stuff in there, but some of the highlighted stuff that you might see the guys out doing throughout the course of the year. Some of the big ones this year were, we spent a lot of time working at Sumter Field and Field Five. We have a couple of projects going on there. We have been very active installing security cameras, both at the amphitheater, at the ice rink, and we continue to expand our coverage as far as that goes, which is something we've really needed. With the amphitheater, we knew we needed some new lighting along the pathway, so we've continued to address the lighting issues along the pathways. And then, obviously, we're in the middle of an Imagination Station restroom remodel, which my guys are doing a lot of the demo, and then we'll have a contractor come in and actually do the remodeling part of it. So, again, not everything the guys and girls do on staff, but at least a look of what they do do. That's all I got. Questions?
Great job.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ben.
Thank you.
I guess let's go around the room, and any comments, questions? Lori, you got any? Brian? Chief? Tyson? Ben? Wes? All right. Hey, bud?
You can ask all of them their names. You guys, you need your names.
Rick, you're up first this time.
Oh, all right. Well, I guess first of all, Happy President's Day, and I just want to thank everyone for coming in, and it really helps us to have local participation in our discussions that we have. This is a big issue that is important to a lot of people as far as the, as the senior housing is concerned, and also the food truck issue, I think, you know, is, is another big issue that we're dealing with. And so, like I say, I appreciate all the input that we can get, and it helps us to do our job. Thank you.
Thanks, Rick. Mary?
I'm going to say no, sir. Have a good night.
I think it's John.
Oh, I hope that doesn't matter. Just want to thank Chief Poole, Tyson, and Ben for their excellent annual reports, and all but you and your staff too throughout the year. Also, I've received half a dozen calls and/or interactions this last week and a half or two weeks, and four of the six started off with, I know I'm not supposed to talk to you. That is incorrect statement that I want to correct right here and now. It is a correct statement that was put in the paper that you should go to other people to discuss this so there's not a potential conflict of interest. However, you can always talk to me. That's what they consti, they said, I thought you were our armburden. You, you can always talk to me. I will give you facts only, and I will not argue with you. I don't see any value in that, having for about thirty years. And I will only give you the facts based on what your questions are. So, if you ask me a question, I will answer it only. So, and that's okay. You can ask me anything you want because I can always choose not to answer it or answer it directly. So, I just wanted to correct that because people, when two-thirds of the people are contacting me, start off by, I don't, I know I'm not supposed to contact you. My response is, you can contact me. It is my responsibility to maintain my distance, and we'll do that. And that's it.
Judy?
I also want to say thanks to all the individuals that came out tonight to voice their opinions on the senior housing project. You know, we may not always agree on things like this, but I think it's important that we're all heard, and I was very glad to see a lot of them show up. Also, thank you Doug, Ben, and Tyson for your reports tonight, also the Parks Department. There have been very, very, very few days when I could not get out there and walk, and he knows that, Ben knows that, so I appreciate that very much. Have a good evening, everyone.
Laura?
I just want to thank the three departments that gave their report. The AS Department heads and also the employees that work under them make my job very easy. I appreciate every one of you. I'm really excited to see what kind of fun we're going to have at the amphitheater this year. And hopefully, we don't have a city thing that makes me feel like I need to hide at my house because quite frankly, it happened last fall. But with that being said, I appreciate every one of you. You do great work for the city. And Mr. Wieland, I, I appreciate you too. I know you had a lot of things on the agenda that we went through really fast, you too, Wes. And counsel, thank you for hanging in. I appreciated the civil discussions from the community members and council members more than anything. I'm glad we got through that very honorably with one another as neighbors.
Okay, I have nothing else to add. Thank you, department heads. Everybody have a great night. Can I get a motion adjourned?
I will.
Second.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yep.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.